Could you please stand?
To allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
We now have a roll call vote. Secretary?
Ms. Bentecourt?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Dr. Marlin?
Here.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yep.
Ms. Tredup?
Here.
Mr. Mental?
Any news? Anyone? Excuse me, this is to notify you that a regular meeting of the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical School District will be held on Tuesday, March 13th, 2025, at 11:21. Actually, we will address mass at 6:00 PM to the student forum. Anyone who wishes to record or photograph the meeting must first notify the chair, who then inform the public per Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, July 2010. Such audio or video recording may not interfere with the meeting. Public comments? Madam Chair, Madam Secretary, do we have any public notes?
There were none submitted.
Thank you. Reading and acceptance of the meetings of the April 8th and April 29th, 2000 meetings. Committee members have received copies of the minutes of the April 8th and April 29th, 25 meetings. Approval?
Not approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None?
I'll just take one minute, Madam Chair, to welcome Karen Tredup to the district school committee. She is the newest member of our committee from the city of New Bedford, so we're happy to have her, to welcome her to the committee, but also to, we now have full complement of members from all three of our sending districts, and so we're happy to have her.
Just want to point out that all the members from New Bedford are female. Saying.
We'll talk later.
I think she's putting on a shirt.
This is really nice.
I think it's historic, that's why I bring it up.
This is supposed to be relatively calm today.
New group in charge. The new reports tonight. Approval of the bills included in your backup material is a copy of the warrant for your approval. Request approval, please.
Not approved.
Second, any second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Here are none. We have an instructional support coach presentation. Dr. Susan Sylvia will give a presentation on the instructional support program.
I'm going to pull that one out of order temporarily, Madam Chair. I don't see her in the crowd yet. So if we could take the items D, E, F, and G and H, and then we'll circle back.
Okay.
Yeah, she's not present at the moment.
So we'll come to superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as is customary, I want to take a moment just to kind of recognize some outstanding work in the district. And as you know, lots of really great things are happening every day, but I want to specifically call out English teacher Laura McLean and her play of Macbeth, which ran last month in the auditorium. Four or 500 kids were in the auditorium watching them do kind of a rendition of watching the story and the book come to life. And so I want to just take a moment to celebrate Laura's contributions and the English department's work in trying to bring some of their works to live theater on behalf of all the kids to be able to enjoy. So it was really a great performance, and I just want to take a minute to kind of call that up.
Okay, Anderson report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to always present this report. So much awesome things to talk about. And I'll be talking first about Ms. McLean's classroom. First of all, she actually partnered with AP history seniors as well as her AP lit seniors. They took a joint field trip to the Isabella Stewart Garden in Boston, and they were engaging in deep cross-disciplinary discussions about art, history, and literature, as you can see illustrated there. But moving on to what Lieutenant Watson just mentioned, the students celebrated Shakespeare's birthday with the stunning student production of Macbeth. The auditorium was packed, as was said earlier. Directed by AP lit teacher Ms. Laura McLean and produced with help from Gen Gaspar's media tech students. Special thanks to the crew members like Ella Whitlow, Hannah, and Sophia Fraga, and actors such as Kendra Santiago and Venicius Schmidt. The auditorium was full, and the student-led Q and A was a highlight. Moving on to automotive, our Academy C. We have 11 students who are out on co-op at this moment, including Angel Moretto at Empire Ford and Avery Witson at Colonial Chevy. Should be down just a bit. Freshmen are learning vehicle servicing basics, and sophomores are working on suspension and brakes. Juniors are now tackling AC diagnostics. Moving on to our business technology students. Students competed in the UMass Dartmouth Titan Challenge as well as the BPA State Conference, with seven students qualifying for Nationals in Orlando, Gabby Gomez and Jordan Diaz. BT open house for prospective students drew 25 interested students. The juniors like Jonathan Garcia demonstrating BT's latest equipment. Some of our BT images right there. Where is that Nationals in BPA? Not at Nationals, I'm sorry, at State. We'll move on down to cosmetology. Cosmetology freshmen explored cultural here and nail practice, as you'll see illustrated in just a moment. We'll go back up to collision in just a second. While sophomores enjoyed a makeup demo by alumni Brianna Machado, and juniors collaborated with medical assisting students for paraffin manicures. See just above, or just below, right there. All seniors earned their nail certifications and 16 passed their state board exams, including Faith Fernandez, Emily Menes, and Kiara Valentin, as you see many of them listed below. Huge feat, and now all of them will be able to go off onto, they were able to go off to co-op the moment they got those exams passed. So we'll go back up to collision. A few little important things to note about collision. Students are making full use of the new equipment in the renovated space there. If you haven't been down there to check it out, it's absolutely beautiful. Students like Austin Aggyard, Adam Spooner, and Elmer Patillo are leading hands-on projects from dent removal and refinishing, simulating real-world work and delivering quality results. Back over to diesel technology. The freshmen completed safety trainings. The sophomores are working on donated trucks, and 15 of the 16 sophomores earned a PUSHA certification. Five students passed the ASE brake certification, and seniors are rebuilding engines, finalizing portfolios, and preparing for careers, college, and military service. Marine technology. The marine technology freshmen are building Bevins skips, as you see illustrated just below. Sophomores are rebuilding engines, and upperclassmen are performing live boat repairs. Nine students are on co-op, including Kaylee Galena and Kobe Carrero. The program is now fully accredited by the ABYC. That's a really major milestone thing. Mr. McConnell, Mr. Brattonalmu, and Mr. Prametal. That program is actually seeing its first group of seniors graduate this year. So that's a major watershed hallmark for that program. The information technology program, if we go down to that. Our senior IT students recently completed diagnostic and repair work on desktop systems at the Boys and Girls Club right here in the city of New Bedford. They were showcasing their technical skill and community service. Underclassmen are preparing for their certification pathways and future projects in cybersecurity and network. And that technically wraps up the Anderson report, but I just want to close out by mentioning, as we already started to talk about BPA, but I want to talk about BPA and Skills USA. Seventy of our students were represented at the Skills USA state competition at Blackstone Valley two weeks ago, and four of our students earned gold, 10 of our students earned silver, and seven earned bronze. It's a major feat. So that means four of our students will be going off to Nationals in Atlanta in June, which is really awesome. One of whom is actually a freshman. So she won gold as a freshman in culinary. Sorry, medical. So really awesome stuff. And we have two state officers also travel, which brings us to six students heading down. And a huge congratulations to the 33 students who traveled to BPA Nationals in Orlando. 11 of those students placed nationally. And so one of them was in first place, four were in second, and three were in third place. So BPA, Skills USA, wrapping up three weeks of great work out of this state showcasing, you know, the artisan imprint that we imprint across the nation. So great work among our students, but particularly our advisors who get them prepared for that stage. I'll be back.
Good report. Parent communications?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packets are the biweekly POSAP reports by grade. As you know, we run these biweekly. We are, just take a minute, and I'll answer any questions you have related to this, but we are going to use our Thought Exchange platform again. We're in conversations with district and school leadership teams around the parent night for the fall, and trying to lift that off. It's part of our strategic plan going forward. And one of the questions that came up today was what do ninth-grade families have to tell us about their experience this year? From exploratory to integrating into high school, from various perspectives across all student demographic groups and profiles. Where are we excelling? Where are we falling short? Those questions are likely to go out by the end of the week, first of next week, for two weeks, to freshman families so that we can aggregate that data through our Thought Exchange platform and use that to better inform our practice for how we want to lift off next year's ninth-grade class. So I just want to kind of advise the committee that in addition to the biweekly POSAP reports, you know that we've deployed the Thought Exchange platform this year. We're going to double down on that here at the end as we try to think about ways to veteran-engage families and stakeholders in our community about the vocational technical experience that happens here. That'll be our last Thought Exchange with families for the year. You will notice next month in my value-to-binder evidence of our Thought Exchange platforms that we've run throughout the year, and I just wanted to kind of foreshadow that by letting you know that we're about to run our last one with families on the ninth-grade experience in preparation for a plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Multicultural Week presentation. Ms. Dennis?
Thank you. I'm going to get to some exciting partying-type stuff. Ms. Dennis, so April is diversity month, and we had our multicultural week, April 14, 2017. And my thinking was you belong. We were able to pull in different performers that week to celebrate music, dance, art, and storytelling. So there was just a few pictures. Show you. The first day we did celebrate your culture on the 14th. We had a 360 booth, and we had multicultural music. Actually, the playlist that we had was put together by a few students in student council in different languages, and again, the 360 booth. So at the 360 booth, we had Find Your Flag. So hopefully, we could play a video. So the students would grab their flag, and I'll leave it to the video to show you the fun they had. So the students had a great, I mean, the 360 booth was busy. There was a line. So that, all these activities actually occurred during the lunch, the different lunch shifts. Because of the timing, that's only the best time for all students to experience it. So normally, what students did, they'll go through the line, and they would, you know, eat lunch, sit down, and they're able to walk around. So they were able to be involved and see all the different activities. And all the activities happen except for the last day, which I'll get to, happened in the welcome center. That's where we set up. So the second day, we had honor through art on the 15th. We brought in two local artists. I'm sure maybe you've heard of them, David Guadalupe. He's from New Bedford. He's a graffiti artist. And also, we had Eden Soares, who painted, you know, the picture, as you see. So students would go around. They really loved both artists. And we have the be kind, we're trying to figure out where to hang that. Also, the other picture that you see on the right is the finished product in my office. He had to take it home to finish it. But it was great for the students to ask them questions and see, really, art come to life. As far as these two artists, again, they're local artists. I believe that they did a lot of the art on the historical buildings like downtown New Bedford. So really happy that they were able to come in. We also had different resources, agencies that came in that day. Community, from the community. We had the Beyond House, CEDC, and the Discovery Language Academy also had tables. The third day, we had experience through drumming. The drummers are from Providence, Rhode Island, was African drumming. This was, this is always a hit. I had them come in last year, but they brought more people this year because of so much of the interaction that they have with the students. So you'll see that they set up right in the welcome center. They brought extra drums. Students came around, they just sat in the seats, and the drummers would do some kind of rhythm, and then the students would coffee. It was even hard for me to even get a seat at the end, because every time students sat up, all the students sat down. So what was great too, some teachers brought their classes, just so their students would have more time. I know that, I believe some students went to class late because they were drumming, so I had to go down and tell the teachers yes, they were participating. But this is, they're always a hit, and the drummers from Providence, they just love coming down here because of all the participation. And we also had teachers participate, so this was really, really, really good. Students really loved it. And the last day was the highlight. I didn't know how this was going to go. It was a little busy. But the students, again, it's all about the students, and it's all about them having fun. But we brought in the Wapenog tribal dance and singers that came in on the last day, which was great. And it was open for juniors and seniors. So this was all the classes, juniors, seniors. This was down in the fieldhouse. And what the dancers and singers did, again, they introduced, like, I want to say five to six dances, and they talked about what the tradition is, what the background of the dance, and they invited students to participate. Students were running down. I was like, please, don't get hurt. I mean, it was, it was fun. It was busy. But again, they were, the dancers and singers, they were just elated because they said they never had so much student participation. So I would like to show you a video. As you see, there's all kinds of students who participated. So that ended up being like a long, like snake. And in the end, at the end, it was just so many students out there. Again, it was great participation from the students. I believe the students had a great time. At the end, they asked questions from the elders. They actually took pictures. So the elders stayed around and took pictures with the students, talked to the students, answered questions. So I was really, really happy. It's a blessing to get the Wapenog tribal. As you know, they perform all across the country. Also, they perform at the Macy's Thanksgiving parade. So it was a great ending to. What has any questions? Yeah, that's the end of my short presidential multicultural week.
Thank you very.
I'm sorry, just one more thing to that week. We had multicultural week lunch menu. So the students actually worked with our cafeteria, and this is some of the menu items that week that they served at lunch. And that was a hit too. A lot of students really enjoyed the multicultural items that were featured.
Thank you very much.
Take a minute, Madam Chair, to thank Yolanda and Maria for their work on this. You know, really important in the world that we live in today, that folks are, it's really nice to see the belonging and the pride that kids feel in one another. And it's not only exemplified in things like multicultural week, but, you know, putting papers together this week for you next month. Starting to look at some of the cultural work responsiveness that's happening in our classrooms, and how folks are using some of the magic school platforms and the technology to build really truly sensitive, culturally responsive teaching practices into a diverse student body. And that's what's at the heart of, regardless of where people are on these issues across the country. And I'm proud of the work that we've done. I'm proud to stand with you in that work. And I'm proud to stand with our kids and our teachers who are embracing a lot of this belonging and making sure that everybody who comes through our doors feels welcome. So really good things that are happening, and I just want to take a minute to kind of thank you and also to share that with the team.
Madam Chair? Yolanda, thank you, because I think that we don't realize how planting some of these seeds along the way, getting kids excited about culture. A lot of these students don't get out of their cities and towns. They don't have transportation. A lot of kids haven't even been to Boston. And this just, you know, we'll stay with them for a very long time.
And you're right about that, because sometimes when I have discussions and some of the suggestions, maybe we can do something at night, but I'm all about equity. Not everybody can get back here at night. So I feel I want all students to have this experience, even if it's in a short time. Again, how many students will be able to see the Wapenog tribal dance? You know, even the African drumming. So, but the downside is it's very tough to get performance during the day because everybody or the students themselves. I wish I had more ethnicity-represented, like the Portuguese dance couldn't get, you know, couldn't get them. I really, we really try to get different performance, but it's tough during the day. Do our best.
Anyone else? Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in your packet include the weekly updates that are sent to staff. You have the last four in your packet there from April 7th, 14th, 28th, and May 5th. A few items of importance to note. The Health Insurance Subcommittee meeting, which we met with the GNBEU. I've since had a meeting with a member of this group's subcommittee as we tackle some health insurance issues for the district. I'm likely to bring a proposal, as we've been talking about at different points, for new employees, the folks that we don't know yet, what that may look like if certain voting time benefits, that's likely to come over the next several months. It's in its final stages. I'll meet with the committee again, the subcommittee again, about that before we go. But that is very likely to occur. You will see lots of comments around the vocational technical admissions process that is swiftly moving through lots of areas of the state government. Just to update folks, I will be in Methuen next Tuesday, where we're expecting the board to take action on the public comment that was put out in the weighted lottery system that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is currently proposing for all statewide. There are parallel systems moving through the state budget process. You may or may not be aware, in the House of Representatives budget, on Beacon Hill, they have included in their budget a pause on statewide implementation of any vocational admissions changes, mandating a task force and a study that is not in the Senate version of the budget. So those two items are likely, that will get worked out during the conference committee at some point over the summer. What the governor's office will do with that, you know, is something we don't know at this point. So more to come on the legislative track of that. We'll see what the department does next Tuesday. We'll take it from there, and I'll certainly update you along that. But I am trying to keep the staff also informed in the weekly newsletter here as well. Pedro Martinez, not the pitcher, from Chicago, is the new DESI commissioner. We expect him to start at some point over the summer. He was appointed by the board in April and confirmed by Secretary Tutwiler, who has that final appointment pending successful contract negotiations for him. And of course, as was mentioned earlier, we're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. Last week with the district, I think Mr. Williams and team did a great job kind of putting together different events every single day for teachers, just to let them know how much that we value the contributions that they have every single day for our kids. And so that's a quick summary of all the stuff that's sort of embedded in the weekly newsletters, but I want to just highlight a few of those items for you.
Madam Chair? You know, the one about the lottery is a big issue, as we know. Are all schools on board with that right now? Or are some still resisting in not doing it?
Yeah, so the answer is no. Not all schools, not all, well, to all schools, not all of the CT schools in comprehensive districts use. Some of them use criteria as well. So it's a complicated issue right now. I think that the board is likely to, they're going to weigh it. I don't know what they're going to do. There are certainly some members of the board who give every indication they're not for change. There are definitely members of the board who are for change. I don't know, we're all 11 members of the board. We're going to find out. I've been going to Everett every Tuesday, fourth Tuesday, all year long. I'll be in Methuen next Tuesday morning. We're going to see. But that will become the official position of the board as of May. Of course, nothing's going to happen with admissions until the fall, when we start approving policies again, at which time we will know what the result of the budgetary process that seems to be moving through a legislative track actually looks like. At some point in July or August, the governor will sign the budget, whether it includes a task force for vocational admissions or not, whether it does include it and it's vetoed. All of that will play out over the summer months. We just don't know that yet. I can tell you that if you remember in the fall, I presented to you that Greater New Bedford Voc Tech was submitting a voluntary compliance plan related to a letter of finding that was issued by DESI last spring. I can tell you, if I haven't told you yet, that has been placed on an indefinite pause. I had a meeting with the department in April. I asked them two questions I had been asking them for months related to data. I received a letter from them basically saying they understand my concerns and that the best course of action right now is to wait to see what our new admissions policy yields in terms of student demographic groups and their concerns related to their letter of findings. So it's a punt, basically, as I see it. It'll be after October 1 numbers come in, whatever they show, we will be able to hear from the department again if they want us to do something or not. The questions I asked in April remain questions that I'm going to need answers to to be able to proceed down that VCP. But I think we may know a lot more. I can understand why they chose to kick this, because we'll know a lot more what's happening statewide and in other places by then. I will also let you know, as I said to folks at the Regen meeting that I was at downtown last week. I can't speak highly enough about the partnership in New Bedford, Dartmouth, and Fairhaven over the last year, multiple years, certainly during my time. I did send an email, text message to all three of the sending district superintendents this week, asking them to direct their teams to, you know, give us access to the SACID identification numbers for all the students that have been admitted under our lottery system this year. All three have agreed to do that. What that will do is allow us to preclaim the students this summer. Once we're able to preclaim the students, we'll be able to identify all of the demographic profiles of all of those kids, which we cannot do in any formal way here. We simply rely on people telling us. But once we're able to preclaim them, we will know how many students were admitted by the lottery that are Yale students, how many students are NiPs, whatever the case may be, the demographic profiles of every student. And that will begin to give us our first real indication about whether the pool of students has changed, is reflective more of some of the concerns that have been raised. So once we have that, certainly we'll be able to run that, those numbers internally. I'll be able to compare them with what our student body makeup is today and what previous lottery processes have shown us, and we'll be in a better position to provide some feedback to you. I'm hoping to be able to do that in August, if not September with you, because at this moment, we are still obligated to pass another admissions policy in October, and I want to keep us on that track. That may change too if there's a statewide policy, but at this point, we're moving down the path of what we know. Hopefully, that answers the question.
Well, I think the biggest thing is that, as a committee member, when I talk to people about, is that's been the number one everywhere. I work out by physical therapy.
Yeah.
Hey. I have a hair problem, don't know. I made a comment that we are following the state directive of being in a lottery situation. So the comment was, well, I hear there's other schools that are not doing it. Therefore, you're not following a directive because everybody else will be doing it. So it kind of got me a little confused to say, I know we're ahead of the curve. I know you've been a very big factor in working with other schools. But I guess I really should not say that is a DESI requirement because that's not true.
We didn't get, so here's, Mike, Mr. Shea, it's a very complicated question, and that is part of what the issue is out there, right? Is folks don't really understand or have lived it this way. Let me answer the question this way. Is folks don't really understand or have lived it this way. Let me, let me answer the question this way. We took substantive policy change locally, right? We took, we, we've taken steps in that direction for the last couple of years. We took our biggest step this year. So there was no statewide mandate at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech or anywhere else yet. That's what's underway right now. Now, here's the question. If we hadn't taken any action, would the state have attempted to intervene? And I, and I say that, I don't know if they could have. I think that's an open question about whether they could have acted and superseded this board's authority. But we didn't get to that point because we took some steps locally that they were at least satisfied with letting us walk through, right? So they didn't push their side of the coin any more than we stayed committed to the past practice that had been there, right? We were letting that data kind of drive the conversation. As I've said, I've said this publicly at MAVA meetings, I've said it at board meetings. Do I think some other schools maybe should have moved as well? Perhaps, right? Do I think that this weighted lottery system is a good statewide solution? No, I don't. I actually think it's going to have the reverse effect in some districts that don't have any perceived gaps. So there's, it's a complicated issue. My preference has been since day one. Data-driven, methodical, process-oriented. At every step of the way here, it has pushed us towards reform. Reforms that I think needed to be implemented here, to be perfectly honest with you. But that's not the case. That's in some districts. And so how this plays, and that's what's really going on in the legislative branch right now. That's what's happening at the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And there's this push between those who don't want to do anything and those who want to go all the way to a weighted lottery that are pulling at the extremes. If it was me, they're not asking my advice, by the way, slow and lethargical, compromise where we can, move forward in the areas that we need to.
Exactly. How I said.
Yeah, I, I would not say it was state mandated yet. It might be by the end of next week.
I'm not against lottery and lottery law. I, I had the combination of. But I just want to make sure because I've been saying the wrong thing.
Yeah.
And I realized I was, so I appreciate your explanation.
If there is any questions, because there is a ton of misinformation out there, happily redirect anyone to our office. I am happy to have those conversations. I am going everywhere I can. As I mentioned, I was at the Regen Committee Thursday. There's a broad group of folks there that I spent an hour and a half with, right? Just doing this so that they can go back and help to spread that message. I'm not, we're taking any and all calls. I've been on the radio. I've done anything I can do to help make sure this accurate information is out there, and I will continue to do that.
I appreciate the, yeah, thank you.
I've been in the same situation at the gym.
Nobody bothers me at the gym with them. I'm starting to take it personal.
And the same, you know, same person over and over again. I didn't take that route. I just said, you know, it's a hundred percent lottery and so everybody has the same opportunity. But my nephew has straight A students and his cousin didn't do as well in school and he got in. Says, wow, this is straight A students. What's wrong with New Bedford High?
I think we have to look at that, that's what the direction of the school's going, not the state. And that's what my problem is like. But I appreciate that and I, you're right. That's the number one. Nobody's asking about the budget. Nobody's asking about.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Nobody's asking about English. It's all about.
Which is more important.
My question is what prompted you to start looking at the policy in the few years back?
Yeah, so you know, certainly I was sensitive to some of the concerns that the department was raising, right? And, and I, I think I've been really open about it, right? So, and I've explained to them, when you look at New Bedford High School, for example, 25% of the students in the high school are EL students, right? But when you look at the three sending middle schools, those numbers range between 15 and 20%, which again, folks are out there saying, well, New Bedford High School is 26% and at Voc Tech they're 6%. We can't make that comparison because some of those students are coming directly into the high school. They're showing up on County Street. They're coming into the high school in ninth, 10th, 11th grade. They never had the opportunity to apply to Greater New Bedford Voc Tech. That said, the reverse is also true. 15 to 20% of the population in New Bedford's middle schools is EL students. Those students all have the ability. What, it's true, they were not applying at the same rate as other students, which is an issue for both us and New Bedford. How do we get them that information? But once we get them to the same application rates, we do have to face the reality, are they being accepted at the same rates? And we never got there in the process with EL students getting that, but we were there with students with disabilities, right? And when I looked at students with disabilities, they were getting accepted at a rate lower than all students. And that prompted us to take a look at, well, why is that, right? Is it their attendance? Is it the discipline? Is it the council recommendation? Is it the grades? And what we have found out is that the two criteria that I think, we think were most disproportionate were grades and the recommendation letters. Now, we have significantly relaxed the attendance criteria, right? It used to be you got 30 points if you had perfect attendance and 29 if you missed a day. Well, now it's pretty much, you have 27 unexcused absences to qualify or not. But as I said to the committee at the time, this year, almost 1,200 kids applied. 1,022 kids were in the quote-unquote lottery. So about 83 to 85%, which is what we had predicted with the department a year ago with these changes, were actually in the gates, right? So the question statewide is, should there be gates or should everyone get a ball and some students get more balls? That's essentially what the question is. We started with a 65-seat pilot lottery in 2021, which was my first year. The second year, we moved to a half-in, half-out modified qualified lottery for half the students to try to compare apples to apples. There were some things we learned from that process with the criteria, the gates to that criteria that we kept. One in particular, we did keep grades, but we lowered it to 70 or better. But we've had several students who got a 68 in seventh grade and an 81 in eighth grade. Average together, it was north of 70, but the policy wasn't written that way. So we learned that and that's what we've applied to the attendance criteria today. So a student who applied this year, who was out 24 times in seventh grade, is technically chronically absent under the standard. But if they only missed two days or three days in the eighth grade year, they would have met the 27 or better over the 270 school days. And so those were some of the lessons that we've learned. The pool has pretty rapidly expanded. It's come with some questions at the gym and in other places. In the end, I, and I've tried to use the rest of my mouth on, on Beacon Hill and with, with the board meetings to advocate for more funding for the expansion of vocational technical seats, both in wall-to-wall schools and in comprehensive schools that offer CTE programs. Because I've yet to find anyone on either side of the issue who doesn't agree with me on this point. We should be giving every student and every family who wants access to a vocational technical education, access to a vocational technical education. I don't think it's our job to tell kids, you should go to this school or you should go to that school. We should be offering them those opportunities. And I say that not as the New Bedford Voc Tech superintendent, but just as an educator and as a dad more wanting the best for my own kids, and I would want that for everyone's kids. So I will tell you, the governor's budget included $75 million to advance that goal. The Senate has, has increased that to 85 million. We'll see what happens on a conference committee and where that lands over the next several months as well. But there is reason to be optimistic that there will be additional funding. That said, and I'll assume my last comment on this, we have to be concerned with what's happening at the federal government and whether or not there will be cutbacks to education in general. And if there is, where does the governor, where does the legislative branch locally start to, to kind of pull things away in order to make sure that schools are funded? So when I tell you that this is complicated on lots of levels, it's complicated on lots of levels. And you know, all I can tell you is that we are, I, I don't think I could be more engaged on this issue. I am talking to folks every day, every week about this. I am everywhere I can be across the state to make sure that we're represented there. And we will see over the next 60 to 90 days where, where that kind of lands.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Student representative, report? No, no, she's not here. Sorry. I meant instructional support. Coach presentable.
Hi there. How's everybody tonight?
Good. You?
Hello, thank you. Okay, so I want to tell you a little bit about some of you who haven't heard much of this from me before. I was here last year as the introduction to instructional coaching that we're going to be embedding into the school. And I gave that input last year. Everybody knew what it was looking like and this year is my update. So what is instructional coaching? It's basically professional learning strategy. It's basically a strategy for, that uses conversation and questioning with teachers to try to promote growth mindset, teaching development, considerations for students, with the end result being that we're hoping that everything, we're hoping that everything, oh, I can do. But with the hope that everything that we do ultimately comes through for the students, right? So our goal is to increase, or my goal is to increase teaching and learning strategies so that students have a more access to the content. So here are the guiding principles. Essentially, I am not there to tell people what to do. I'm there to help them work through whatever sense of overwhelm they have in terms of being a new teacher. This is not a PTS teacher, so I'm going to take off that and then. And so I'm really there to try to help people work through their overwhelm because a lot of times people come into the job not quite expecting what they get, right? The expectation is whatever you have in terms of when you learn classes. So you expect that and then you come in not realizing there's lesson plans and paperwork and meetings and Adam correcting and all of these other things. And so I try to help them work through those who have this overwhelm, the expectations, how to navigate systems. I give them an ear to free to express themselves. It is a confidential environment. I do not tell everybody else, including supervisors, what we're talking about so that I'm always a place for people to be able to come to. It's touted very much so as a collaboration. When people come to meetings with me, they're regularly scheduled when they come. The first thing I ask them is, how are you? What do you want to talk about today? Sometimes there's a flood. And sometimes they're like, I'm fairly good today. I'm fairly good today. What can we talk about? What do you have to bring to the table? And so I balance the overwhelm with what I think we need to be embedding into the new teachers. All right, so what's their obligation? Basically, their obligation is attendance and participation. So there is no set schedule, as you just heard me say. I do have a monthly task list that I try to cover with people. But I force it upon them. We, I work it into conversation. They're welcome to bring their ideas, their concerns. They, we're looking at, as I said, the growth mindset, the continuous learning process. Their obligation is to try to remain positive. It is to try to remain focused on student achievement, to try to embrace whatever challenges they're feeling instead of being angry about them or frustrated or overwhelmed with them. Like, so we try to pick that apart in terms of every job has things that come at you that you're not expecting and how can we just navigate that? What, what sources can we find to support you through that? And it's also about celebrating successes. I try to write notes to people and leave them in a number box if something great happens to them. I send them emails wishing them luck on their state testing, you know? I try to really kind of promote that environment where they feel support. So what does it look like? Who's participating? This year, we have 32 non-PTS CTE teachers, 26 last year. There are 32 on my roster and 21 non-PTS faculty teachers, 23 last year. So that's 53 teachers on my roster. And if you look at how many coaching meetings I have, you'll notice that I did not eat lunch in October. I just met with people all day long. So sometimes for me, that looks like, and this is the expected for, that's made at this point. There's probably another 30 or so in May and the shortened June, we're looking at, I think the number was around 35 or so. So about 540 meetings altogether throughout the year with these 53 people. Everybody has a regular schedule of their own time so that they know when they're coming, so that they know what to expect. Oftentimes, like I said, they come prepared with things because they know we're meeting together, which I think is a great resource for them when they know that I'm there on this day at that time. And so what does the teaching looking look like? I explained that a little bit, but here are some of the things that we do. I do have a menu of things that I introduced at the beginning. It's a menu of things that we can talk about. It's a menu of topics and ways that we can get to those topics. So sometimes we're brainstorming. People are struggling at this time of the year completing evaluations. And while they've gone through the evaluation training, it was at the beginning of the year or once a month and it feels a little overwhelming. Maybe they're dealing with grades and it doesn't quite sink in. Maybe it does for other people. They talk to their supervisors, but they really just want someone like, hey, can you sit here? And like, really, these are the ideas that I have and I have an hour with you. Can we talk about what those look like? And for those people who are making assumptions technologically savvy, it's, I know the directions are in this form. I'll go there. Can you walk me through it? Because reading it isn't the same for me as, as, you know, having somebody walk me through it. So we do that. We reflect on lessons. Oftentimes, one of the things that I go to when people don't have something set that they want to talk about is, hey, tell me about a great lesson you had lately or tell me about something they're struggling with that I can help you navigate. We call plan lessons. We talk about, we introduce new activities and new learning strategies. Couple of the ones this week were about changing up how long you're focused on a strategy, right? 20 minutes is a, is a good chunk of time if you're presenting for 45 minutes. Talking to probably lots of students a little while ago, so how can we change that? Does that look like? What ideas do you have? Things like that. So we go through all of these things and more. This is just a sampling of what meetings might entail. And then these are some of the topics that we cover. We cover, as I mentioned, lesson planning, curriculum. We work on course guides and syllabi. We work on commenting students' individual needs, who need them. We work on EL strategies. I'm ELSL certified, you know, I'm also partially in charge of the EL department, so we work on that. We work on effective parent communication, particularly with newer teachers who haven't, who haven't engaged in that. Toward the beginning of the year, they're afraid. I don't know, I just, you know, I want to say the wrong thing. It's not that they don't want to reach out or they don't know. They're just afraid to say the wrong thing, you know? So we kind of sometimes go through the rules of that, talk about letting be the parent. How would you say it to me? Let's talk about what that looks like. So we talk a lot about, a lot, a lot, a lot of adolescent psychology as well. So if you're a CTE teacher who's worked with adults only and you come in here and you're running a shop with 20 kids and sometimes you don't understand what an adolescent, how they process versus how an adult processes. So we spend a lot of that, like, well, how would you react to that? Let's talk about what that looks like in a 14-year-old brain. It's just a different, right? All right, and so what's to come? Year three is next year, which I'm very excited about. Right now, it looks like we'll be welcoming back 40 of the non-PTS teachers that are currently on my roster. And we'll be welcoming in a 10-ish new people due to retirements and, and other reasons for people leaving. Although I don't know of any others other than retirements right now. I'm hoping to expand classroom visits, small group collaborations. Those are some of the things that were also on my to-do list last year. I started classroom visits, so I've taken several people, actually quite a few people, not several, to see other classes. So for example, we have a teacher who is a CTE teacher. He's going to be moving to related from shop and he's a little nervous, right? I don't know how that like hour works, how you can do a six-hour thing. So we visited two other veteran related teachers to look at their structure. We sat with 30 or so minutes of the class with the teacher's permission. And then we chatted about it afterward, what things apply to what they think they could be doing in their shop and that related class, and we looked at that. At times, people ask me to come to their class and give them some feedback on a lesson that we were talking about or one that we were planning. So I'll go there and I'll give that person confidential feedback. It does not go toward evaluation. All of this is not evaluative. Small group collaborations are on the rise. So I did send out an invite medium, maybe midway through the year, reminding people that we could do small groups. So it's particularly helpful when we have three people, say, in one area that are all new. So we bring them all together and then we can talk a little bit more about what does it look like across their, their area? How can they support each other? This year, we had a veteran teacher who asked if he could be part of that. The two teachers in his area who are non-PTS were talking to him about it. And he was like, well, can you ask her just a little bit if she minds if I come? Because I would love to go too. And so he's been coming once a month with them and the three of us meet and we talk about their curriculum. Taco creating, we, we work together with the two non-PTS teachers, which is awesome. And so there are plenty more things on the horizon. Sometimes I don't get some because it's 73 minutes in a month, but I'm trying. So here we are at the end of the overall gist of what I'm doing every day all day. Well, does anybody have any questions and any feedback you'd like to offer or anything more that I can add?
So how's that thing to, the relationship with their mentors?
So that's a popular question. People often say, what's the difference between a mentor and a coach? So I happen to be, I'll give myself a shameless plug, even though it's not going to get me any money or a raise or anything, but I'm, I happen to be working with a company called Idioma Education Incorporated. And we are, we've been contracted by the Department of Ed. We're, they were rewriting the goals for the teacher induction mentoring program. And I'm contracted through Idioma to write a company handbook. And I'm contracted through Idioma to write a company handbook for that. So what does the mid-teacher mentoring program look like? How does it break down? How do we differentiate teachers? Career change teachers are in there now. There was no handbook before. They were not specifically mentioned in the guidelines. It was all in there now. So we're differentiating between novice teachers, career change novice teachers, and incoming teachers from other districts. So we're really mapping out a school sequence of what that looks like. And so when we're mapping that out, just over to your question, when we're mapping that out, that's really about the, the mentor working as a full group of mentors, right? They've all got a plan together. They work together to support each other and then all of them work to support their independent people. They largely plan meetings. We have planned meetings for them once a month that they go to. Mine is more, more tends to be a little more of the overwhelm, right? We're working on the moment, right? So at this moment, when you come to me and what's going on and how can we navigate that? Where the mentor stuff seems to be a little bit more planned out with some navel talks as they go.
Let's jump in on that, Mr. Kitchen.
Friezsch?
That's right.
You do the friezsch?
I'm not a therapist. That is in my introduction. I'm not a therapist. I just pretend to be one.
Dr. Sylvia partners with Kathy Rabello and Carmen Amaral in the mentoring component. They kind of lead the mentoring effort for us. But I will also speak to Susan's background, right? And her, and her doctorate degree was in a focus around CTE education and career changes. And one of the things that we've all kind of seen since COVID is really an exodus from our profession in very large numbers, right? We've talked about that. It's better. There's more people applying for jobs now than there were three years ago. But a big piece that was missing in the post-COVID space was being able to support some of those new teachers beyond their evaluators, beyond their mentors. I mean, that's why we went down this pathway a couple of years ago was to dedicate, specifically the first year, we dedicated it out of the ESF funds and we've absorbed that cost through other reallocation efforts. But the idea behind that is to make sure that our new educators in the profession, whether they're academic or CTE, career changes are not alone, that they have a dedicated weekly, bi-weekly meeting. And as they go through their three years, that's phased out to bi-weekly or monthly and then bi-monthly in that third year. But making sure that, that they have that understanding about that there's someone here to support them. And, and I like the piece that Susan talked about, we talk about this a lot, which is, are we meeting people where they are? No one, no kids are the same in our classrooms and no new teachers are coming in with exactly the same skill sets. And so being able to put somebody in a position to coach and meet different teachers where they are to help them grow in the process, I think is something that is largely missing from educational systems in Massachusetts and one that I was proud to recommend to have this committee endorse. And I'm still proud of that work here as well. I just want to also thank Susan publicly for her work. She has assisted me in a statewide initiative that I've led for MAVA to try to improve access to teacher testing statewide. There are some new regulations coming from the department, probably this summer or into the fall, but I'm proud of the work that we've done there. We have successfully recruited more than 60 professionally licensed educators across the state to serve as non-PTC evaluators. And what that has done is allowed the department to open up more tests at testing sites across the state to get CTE educators licensed in the topics that they teach. We're in the final stages of really trying to branch that out to expand testing sites as well. But Susan was part of a small team with Mr. Pius and myself that we worked on this initiative on behalf of MAVA, so I want to thank you for your help with that as well.
So here's my final favorite story that I like to tell when people say, what exactly does that look like, right? Differentiating for teachers. We tend to know as people in the room who are in education what it looks like for students. And so one of the things that I like to draw the picture of is if you have an A check teacher, right? Who, when they were in their, their position outside in the world, they came to work, they got their assignment, they were in the truck, they went to the placement, the person they're working with, and then they worked long by themselves most of the day, right? They returned to work, turned in their timesheet, whatever, they go home. That person has a different, a different set of skill set, a different skill set than, say, a cosmetologist who rents a chair, right? That person is sitting there, I don't know about yours, but mine is Chatty, right? She's fantastic. I love her, I've been with her 30 years, but she's very social. She has a social aspect to her job that she's super comfortable with. Neither of those people have worked with teenagers, right? But then if we look at somebody in another field, so we happen to have a person, I won't name the shop because I think that gives too much away, but we have another person who in their career, they were working with teenagers. So when he came in, he's like, oh, I'm super comfortable with the teenagers and the class management and everything. I can't do this lesson plan stuff because I'm used to winging what I do based on what's in front of me. So while these three people coming in seem like they might be the same surface, surface entrance into the, into the school, their, their needs are very different, right? Their, their transfer skills, speaking are very different. And so that's what I try to do. I really get to know people at the beginning of the year and try to figure out what's going to make the job more available to them. So the last thing. Any other? Thank you so much.
Old business. Vacation day carryover policy review. Your backup material. Copy of the breakdown that members requested.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in your packets, last, two weeks ago, we spoke about the vacation carryover policy again in a post-COVID space. So I, we summarized this. Pam is here to help explain if need be, but into four categories of folks that acquired vacation time or acquire, I guess, vacation time across all, all, all the years. These were kind of the days that existed beyond the cap and the estimated payout by group. We do have that by individual, should members wish to see that. That has been broken down. I noted that on the paper. But I see basically three steps, well, three options. And I'm certainly just recommending to the committee, you can let me know where you are. But this policy is scheduled to lapse on June 30th, 2025. So we're going to need to take some action related to this. I think the options are to extend the current policy for a couple of more years with a direction to provide additional staff time to utilize those vacation days. I am happy to execute that. That is not my preference. I will share that with you. That will have a significant impact on operations. Several folks have, you know, 30, 40, 50 days more than what they will accrue. That is more than a day a week that some folks will be out. So it's an option. Of course, you could punt it further to 2028 and then, you know, that softens the impact, but that's an option. The, the second option is to structure the buyout, which is listed on the front, where you can buy out those vacation days beyond their limits, those caps. That is what the money on the front is. We are prepared to execute that at your directive if that's the pathway you want to go. Or third, you could implement a comp, a combination of both strategies where we can ask employees or you can direct employees, we'll buy half, you have the other half to kick to another time. Those are the options I see in front of us. And again, just respectfully asking that at some point I get guidance, you know, before June 30th, so that I can direct our team to move from there.
When was the original policy date?
The original policy date, I'm, I'm going to guess, I can get the exact number, 2021, because it became an issue during 2020. You know, folks were just, we just weren't out in 2020, right? So all those days literally just built to the next year, right? And so all those caps kind of got blown through. You know, when I became superintendent in July of 2021, I've been encouraging union employees to use that time, but every year, I'll be perfectly honest with you, they have told me, Mr. Watson, I have 15 days beyond the cap. Can I carry the days over? And I have said yes, right? Because I happen to share the view that many folks had shared last time is, I don't want to take that benefit away. Those folks were there for us when we needed them in a very difficult stretch that saw lots of people exit the profession. I'm not comfortable with that. So I'm, I'm comfortable telling them they have to use their time if that's the direction that the committee takes. But like I said at the beginning, that'll have an operational impact for some. So we've been, we've done better. It's working our way there. We probably could get there if you kicked the can a few more years out, but it's, it's going to take a few years for some of us to get there. Or we're going to be out every Thursday or Friday. That's the problem. On top of this, it's another 25 days for, for non-union folks, 15 to 20 days for a lot of our long, along employees, right? If somebody has 20 or 30 days above the cap and accumulates another four or five weeks, right? You're essentially saying, if we have to execute this in the next year, they need to be out the equivalent of eight to 10 weeks this year coming up. That is going to have a significant impact regardless of how it's executed, one day a week, two days a week, or whatever.
Do you know how many administrators make up those 63 days?
We're happy to provide. I want to repeat, we are happy to provide.
Curious if it's two or 20.
No, I believe it's going to be under 10.
It's under 10 administrators. It's more than 10 total people.
Right. I was just looking at the administrator, the 63 days.
These are the beyond the 50-day cap.
That's right.
So they get their 50.
That's what I'm saying, and they're going to keep, accrue more.
And as you are aware, you know, I'll just say this out loud, I've said it to our folks already, the new members of the GNBAU since 2021, there are no more administrative days. Just so folks are aware, we are no longer providing administrative days to union employees who did not work for the district as of that day. It's something that my non-union friends will probably be very upset that I say out loud, but it is something that I want to remove from the district. Those are three additional days that, in my opinion, I don't deserve more, more personal time than other folks who work for the district, right? That was put in place years and years ago for administrators at a time when the district did not have personal days. The district has since put personal days in and a decade or whatever ago, administrators kept their personal days and their administrative days. When I became superintendent, we moved to end administrative days. Now, we haven't taken them away from me or anyone else who had them, but we are not giving them to new members. And as I've told everybody in the room and the non-union side, when I give mine up, you'll be giving yours up. And I am happy to give mine up at a time when nobody in the union bargaining unit has them as well. And as those folks retire, that is what we're going to do. Because to the point that folks have made, right? 25 vacation days, three personal days, 18, I just can't have folks out of the building that much, right? It's, it's just not feasible. So that's just how I feel. I want to be really honest about how I feel and I'll be really honest that I am not going to take that from anybody in the room while some of our union members are, are getting them. Every year that goes by and someone retires or replaces somebody that doesn't have them, there are less folks getting administrative days than there were four years ago. And in another four years, it will be a time to pull the plug.
Can you answer your question? There's six.
Six administrators?
Any other question?
Well, I think we should try and give Mike, Superintendent, a direction of what we're thinking because he want to know in one more meeting. So I think, whatever, I don't have an answer, but I do think we should give you a direction.
You see, we can cash them out. We can cash off that one.
Have the funds to do payout?
Yes.
I would cash out up to that $116,000 this year. I would continue it for two more years. And at the end of that two years, if I'm not cashing them out again.
Okay. So let me understand. So the folks.
For four years, and now we've just created that problem and it seems like there's not anything hanging over anybody right now to say, oh, I'm going to lose them. So I would say, I'm not going to spend it again. If I get down in two years and I've got, you know, 75 days there, you lost them.
Yeah. So, so I understand. So authorization to allow the employees to cash out. So this, this.
The overage.
The overage.
Yeah. If you, if you authorize 116 on this, everybody could lose their day. Everybody could get cashed out. But I'm understand, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. We also would extend the COVID days by two years. So employees would have the choice to either take the payout to get to their cap? No.
Cash them out. They don't have a choice unless they want to use them between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
Are you saying that if they accrue beyond the 50 again, there's no payout? You have to use them?
The contract only allows for the carryover, I think, of five days, 10 days.
So the, the contracts are a little different. Non-union is 50, but I think it's 15 now for Unit C members. It's 10 for maintenance and custodial.
The contract allows you to carry over.
That's the cap.
Well, what payout if you go over that? I agree.
You've got two years to use them, but if you choose not to get, take the, take the cash out, then take the time off.
Okay. So basically, the choice for the employee is take the payout by June 30th or you got to use them in two years.
On the overage, we'll stay with the overage. On the overage, you can either take the payout and continue just taking a day or two here. Whatever the overage is, that's what you're going to get cashed out on. So if I say, I'm not going to, I don't want to cash out, I'm going to take off the next six days. So be it, pay for six days, six days.
I just.
Give them an option of.
Give an option of use them, use them or get cashed out for that amount.
By June 30th.
By June 30th. Anything.
So what's the two years? Is the bottom missing?
Or the fit, or then you have the cap, right? The so-called cap? Isn't the cap?
So I see it as one, I see it as the same.
Not, not, it's not the, it's not the contract.
So the cap is in the contracts for the union employees and then for non-union employees, it's either in the handbook or in their admin contract. That's where the cap is.
So if I'm in my individual contract, I can carry 50 days.
That's what we calculated.
If I cash that out, do you get a check for those?
I understand what you get with them, but I thought there was an additional 50 above whatever the contract rate was.
No, 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 no.
Whatever your balance is, your balance can't be more than.
Non-union employees can carry a balance of 50 days, but they can't carry that in addition to something else.
So it's just basically the 332 days.
This is, this number for administration is because our administrators have north of 50 days and that's what we're trying to, we're trying to undo that.
Everybody just back to 50 or 15 or 10.
I think, you know, as, I like the idea that we want to get back to zero. You know, clean it up right now.
Use it up. Use it or you cash it out.
Buy out or use it before June 30th. So if I have five days over the limit, I might use the five days rather than. So that was there. Once you, once you're at starting on next year's budget, you have your maximum, then you got to start using them wiser.
Right.
And you have to use some in December or November. You don't wait until the end of the year, we could have 30. You can't do it.
So I'm understanding. Let me make sure I understand the motion, what was soon to be, what might be a soon-to-be motion, is we're cashing out everybody above their individual limits by June 30th. We, we know that number to be $115,979. Maximum of $116,000. That, that's the number. We've, we've calculated it out at this year's rates. That will get everybody from the administration, Teamsters, clerical in IT and non-union clerical down to their maximum days for carryover. So like administrators that are left after the buyout will have 50 days plus whatever they're going to get next year, but they got to use what they get next year because we're not going to increase that again. That's, that's how I'm understanding that, correct?
year, and I have 75 when I begin, your contract only says you get paid 50.
Correct, you have to use.
You're going to start using them.
You've got to use the 25 you're going to get next year, right?
Yeah. They're not going to get cashed out.
We don't, we don't want to see this in three more years.
No, no.
Right.
No, no, I, I agree with that.
We won't even have to extend it.
It won't have to be dealt with again if we execute that plan.
We will not have to extend it.
We will not have to extend it.
We will not have to extend it.
That's why when you said the extension, I thought you were giving them an option.
I thought there was the contract rate, additional 50 above the contract rate.
No, 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 no.
People are just going to be sitting around.
There's not an additional 50. People will have 50, but they'll get their 25, they're going to use their 25, they'll be back to 50 by next June 30th, which is what the cap is. You don't have to extend it and that, the question was whether you wanted to do both.
Some administrators may use it in July and August, because July 1st is the new year.
That's true.
So all of a sudden, I'm at 50, I'm going to take 10, two weeks off during the summertime, so then they already backed out 30, so that's the advantage of it.
So I'll make it in the motion.
Motion?
To cash it out, or allow them to use their overage before June 30th.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to perfect cash out.
Do we have a second?
I like it.
Do we have a vote? And Secretary?
Ms. Bentecor?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
The Marlin?
Yes.
The Kitchen?
Yes.
The Tredup?
Yes.
The Mental?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the subcommittee exists currently, it's Ms. Bentecor, Shea, and Mr. Olivera. I would like to schedule a sit-down with you folks in my fourth year now, so it's a year-one evaluation, a formative evaluation, but I am going through the steps, as I mentioned to the Chair before, of putting the kind of summit of binder together for you, or you choose to do that with the other members, we can certainly discuss, but I want you all to be aware of the work that the team has done related to all the SMARTY goals we established. Even though it's not required, I will be updating the SMARTY goals in August, because we'll be moving to Phase Two, year two of our strategic plan. I think you'll be pleased with the progress that we've made, but I want to schedule that meeting with you so that we can be prepared at our June meeting for you folks to take a public vote around that, because we need to submit with all the other, with all the other staff members. So if we could, plans in our calendars, I don't know what's available for you guys, I can be available morning, night, whatever it is that's, that's for you guys.
With the two retirees, you have so much more flexibility, but what do you think of next week?
Next week's going to be tough, because I'm going to be in Methuen, I have to be in Marlboro on Thursday, maybe the week of the 27th, or, yeah, that would give us time to put the binders together for everyone else, if, if you have anything Memorial Day week. And if that's not good, we can.
We have availability AM.
I could do the 23rd next Friday.
That's the follow-up, the, no, that's the 29th.
The 29th?
Yep.
I could do it at 3:00 on that day if you want.
What day?
Could do 3:00.
The 29th, because I have a hold on a negotiation at 2, I could meet with you guys at 3, and then we could go to the.
I have a SMEC board meeting at 5:30, but.
Yeah, well, we got an aviation meeting at 4, so.
It's not, it's not here.
It's not, yeah, but I just need about 30 or 40 minutes with them.
You are me.
If I could do like 3:00 to 3:45, that would be perfect.
I'll text Wayne.
Yep.
We'll put a hold on that.
And if he's good, we're good. The 29th, Maria, 3:00.
Okay.
We need to change it, we certainly can't.
29th is good for me.
Okay. All right, great.
Vote to transfer to the Transportation Reimbursement Fund based on time, an expenditure not to exceed Chapter 71 reimbursement amount. Pam?
This is the annual vote that the committee does for moving funding into the Transportation Reimbursement Volving Fund, based off of what is not spent from the budget expense for the line of transportation.
Do we have more of a motion? That your committee vote to transfer to the Transportation Reimbursement Fund has a request.
Second?
Second.
Do we have the amount?
No, because I haven't received all my final bills from Tremblay yet.
You want to wait till we get the final one? No? Okay.
Well, I won't have all of that information till after.
July 1st, right, 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 right.
Yeah, do we have a request?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't need a rule. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vote to designate equipment as surplus, included in their backup materials, a copy of the equipment to be designed as surplus, just request approval.
Request approval.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Folks? For personal appointments, retirements, or resignations to be received and placed on file.
They should receive and place on file. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Notice of resignation?